It stopped raining.
Hopefully not snagged, a couple of things aren't exactly just cut and dry.
It's a good way to play. Less cut and dry than anybody about ten minutes ago.
Yeah.
See, the problem is. Monday, I'm sorry, Tuesday, Thursday, Monday.
It's fun. I was trying to do it. I turned the heat on and all of a sudden I could see the ice. Turned the window down by windshield, yeah.
You have something on and you're like.
Yeah. That's what I tried. I thought my passengers would go down about their cars. Is that ice?
Was there ice on the outside, it was like freezing.
Yeah.
Okay, so it wasn't as much.
No.
Looking at wipers and scrapes to make sure it wouldn't be on there when I went back out. I don't want to.
All right, well, good.
Does it work now? Oh, yeah, it works.
How is it not down there?
Definitely works, yeah. Well, then being seven o'clock, I guess we'll call the February tenth, twenty fifteen, city council meeting to order, all council members present, Administrator Lawson, Attorney Hank Riggs, Engineer Rhine, and there are no citizens here to comment, our uniform citizens. So, do we have any corrections or additions to the agenda? Motion to adopt the agenda then?
I make that motion. I'll second.
On favor?
Aye.
Consent agenda. Anything that should be taken out, or do we have a motion to adopt consent agenda?
So, move.
Second? On favor?
Aye.
Moving right along. No presentations or public hearings, so we can get right on to Joe and the engineering reports.
Mr. Mayor, good evening, council. Not a lot to report tonight. I'll give you an update, a brief update here on the preliminary work for First Street project. On First Street, the soil borings that we authorized last month were done. They were done late the week of January sixteenth, and they're working on the geotechnical report right now to summarize the findings, present that to us. I expect to get that this week. They had estimated three weeks after the borings were taken to get the report turned around and completed, so I would expect that that report will be arriving sometime this week. Yep, should be sometime this week, we should get it. The other thing we've got going on is, we have gotten two quotes for doing televising of the sanitary sewer. We got one from Roto-Rooter and one from Empire Pipe Services, and the quotes were a little bit different because they've got a little bit different equipment, and their capabilities of televising that private sanitary sewer is a little bit different. So, we're going through the quotes right now and trying to assess exactly how much each one can televise and what the cost would be, and we'll get that information summarized and presented to Mark yet this week, so we can make a decision.
There a large difference in bid prices, or?
No, it'll probably be about, a matter of about five hundred dollars difference between the two quotes, when all is said and done, but I think, I think one is going to require more hands-on from city staff to help them, and the other one will require less hands-on, which I think could be a determining factor as well. You know, with the city staff obviously being busy with their own tasks that they've got to do every day, having to provide support to the televising is probably something that, if we could avoid that, would be beneficial to the city.
But on the other hand, if one has a superior capability, that's important also.
Yep, and so we're gonna, we're gonna summarize, we're gonna go through that information and summarize it, we'll present it to Mark, and then if Mark feels comfortable making the decision at an administrative level, we can certainly authorize that to proceed, otherwise, if not, we can bring the results back to council for consideration.
So, no preliminary findings?
No, not at this time, no.
Process is in process, sum it up.
Process is in process, correct. All right, there's not any other questions on First Street. Give you a brief update on the analysis for the fire station sites. We had hoped to have that work done and ready, present to council tonight, but the architect needs a little more time to do a good job of the preliminary layout on each of the sites. So, we discussed with Mark, having that information ready for the March council meeting, and planning to have a meeting of the fire committee, probably that last week of February, to go over the findings, and if they're comfortable, if the committee's comfortable with it, then we'd bring it to council in the March tenth council meeting. So, everything's progressing fine, it's just taking the architect a little bit longer than he originally anticipated to get those site layouts done. Okay. And as, as he and I discussed, he said I could probably rush and get it ready for the February meeting, and I said, you know, I said, I think this is an important issue to the city, that rather than rush for the February eleventh, I'd rather that we do a thorough and, you know, job and present it at the March meeting.
It's an extremely long-term investment, and let's be real, this has been in process for a long time.
Correct, and that's what I told him, the four weeks that we spend now, that four weeks that we would try and save by rushing for this meeting, I said, it's not worth that. We'd rather make sure process works smoothly and thoroughly and completely, and have ready for the March meeting, so.
Okay, thank you, Joe.
You're welcome.
So, then we can move on to legal. Scott?
Ken, Mark, do you want to jump in on the building permit issues, and I do the others, or?
Yeah, that's fine. For update on Chris Henke, there's two things. The first thing is, the leased land from the EDA, from the city, the EDA gave, I guess from the EDAs land, the EDA gave notice to Henke that he's gotta vacate that land. The notice I just got today from Scott, so that'll be going out to him, and based on the lease, he's got a, we have to give him a hundred and eighty days notice.
Twenty, a hundred and twenty.
Hundred and twenty days notice, so that is gonna be going out shortly. I'm gonna go over it, and then I'll have Dan Doomer, you know, the chairman of the EDA, go over it, and basically, he'll be given that, is that four months, five months to?
Four months, approximately.
Four months to clear off that land. The other thing that the EDA also did, and this was at the meeting, that annual meeting at Schweigs, was to send him notice that they're in foreclosure on that other land, where he's building a cement plant, and basically, he's got the outstanding issue with the building permit, which he has not responded back to us, he has not filed for an amended building permit, and basically, the EDA is, I think, like everybody has said, you know, enough is enough. He's got most of that done. He's got that block building still going up, but this is a process, the letter from the EDA to foreclose the land, you know, if he all of a sudden came in, got everything pulled together quickly, the EDA could reconvene and reconsider that, but the EDA board said they wanna start that going down the pike, and, you know, there's periods of time between when he's got the notice and the next steps, and so, he's not gonna have much time, though.
He really doesn't under the way, notwithstanding the one requires a hundred and twenty under the original lease, the idea of lease was going to go away with the new land purchase, obviously that hasn't occurred. There was an extension done to the development agreement, which was the purchase for the additional, or the other land. None of the three modified timeframes in there were met in any way, shape, or form, so that's a straightforward, he's got the ability to cure, like Mark says, if he doesn't cure within thirty days, the city has the ability, or in this case, the EDA has the ability to go and take it.
Still doesn't change, if the hundred and twenty days is in the original agreement, that's still in effect.
That's on the leased portion of the property, that's not on the purchased portion, yes, exactly, and the reality is, you serve him of both these, he's been served twice with other letters over the last, they were both in twenty twelve. He did come and bring some compliance at that point in time, and then, like I said, there was the extension done in early part of last year, but he did not mean either of the three deadlines in there. So, that's, that's where we're at, that's what will go out, and he'll have to comply or not, and then the EDA at that time decides, if there's no compliance, then you move forward and can retake the property.
And we also have this item three, status of fines.
Yeah, and that's just another, that was one of the.
Part of the same.
Yeah, it was one of the provisions in the original, or the amended agreement, that there was additional dollars that would have to be paid if he was not in compliance. He wasn't in compliance, but he's made no payments under that as well, and it's my understanding as well, he's not, or he's behind at least two, if not more, payments on the lease right now.
Just to pull a hypothetical scenario out of the air.
Okay.
If he were to come and remove all of his equipment from that leased land, not take care of any of these other things, pay the fines, get a new permit, whatnot, so we were going to repossess the land, what would be the status of the equipment that he has on that land that he purchased?
Right, yeah. From the standpoint of where the agreement is, typically, you would say he's supposed to remove it, if he does not remove it, it becomes property of the EDA at that point in time, arguably, whether they want it or not, sometimes it becomes a situation where it's a cost. You try to protect against those things, and basically it says, he must remove it, just like the lease says, whether or not he does, that's the other issue, we have to enforce that as well, but, yeah, there may be additional costs, and, you know, that's the EDA allowed to figure that out.
We try to sell it, I mean, if we take possession of that land back, we try to sell it, so that plant, the building is, you know, is there.
Right.
Building's a liability unless it's being put to you to, to the use for which it was built.
Yeah, yeah, so, you know, we have that option, or maybe he comes back and we work a deal out and he pays us to take, I don't know, it's kind of a very, very specialized situation, so, you know, we, we would, but normally when you have excess property, you'd auction it or sell it off.
Right.
Now, to auction a cement plant, I don't know how many local buyers would be, you know, it's almost something you'd advertise nationally, you know, try to see if we could, we'd set a minimum price and then take quotes on, or bids on it, or whatever, I guess.
Yeah, that's it, there's a hope there'd be a positive response, light sort of occurred back in the middle of the fall, I'm not sure that's the case, because he's got obviously now some debt obligations that need to be paid as well, because of the amended agreement.
Okay, then I guess we can move on to new business here. Pay equity compliance report.
It's in the packet, weed, from everything it looks like we're in compliance, but the pay equity, which would be a first, I mean, we get, we, we get in compliance after, you know, you initially submit this report to the state, but it's not uncommon that you, they come back and say that you're not compliant, and you have to make changes to this or that, well, this year it doesn't look like, or we do it every two years, that we have to do anything, it looks like we're, we're in compliance, so, in the past, the city's gotten kind of upside down with this process with the, with the muni, because we have, we, here we have people that work at the muni that are bartenders, and this has to do with male, female, pay equity, and the state will come back and say, well, you've gotta pay somebody, and I don't want to say a specific position, but a part-time position, that would normally pay ten bucks an hour, for example, a service type of position, you know, you have to pay the women like fifteen, sixteen bucks an hour, well, we can't do that, I mean, it doesn't, it doesn't work with a muni, I mean, we'd be bankrupt, basically, so we come back and tell them, that type of job doesn't fit your criteria, where like a library employee or a street department employee is different, but that's a service type of job, and it's, but this time around, it, it doesn't appear like we're gonna have any problems bouncing out the pay scales, so that would be good.
So, we need a motion to submit the report to.
Yeah, yes, correct, we need to, yeah, the council needs to approve the report, and then we have to post it, and whatever else.
I make a motion that we approve the report. I'll second it then.
On favor?
Aye.
Motion passed. Account receivable write-offs, and looking through that, it's definitely old bills that are uncollectible, so.
These go back, I'll sell them, go back to two thousand eight, but we have the write-off, based on accounting requirements, we have the write-off on collected bills, the council has to approve that, so that's what this is.
More gas be?
Yeah, I guess it would be.
Well.
I think it goes back further. I mean.
I've got that in mind, because the auditors are here coming next week, so.
Wow, you get that, that date?
Yeah, all right. Wednesday, Tom is supposed to be here, I talked to him in Rochester at the SEMLM meeting.
Okay. I did have just a, a general question comment from two thousand eight, eight, nine, and the unpaid bill is for five hundred and seventy-five dollars. Did we put a new body on the animal, or what, for five hundred and seventy-five dollars?
Well.
The other, the other one was forty-five dollars, and.
I mean, you have. This is, you know.
Or was it just room and board for five years?
It probably was boarding, multiple animals, there might have been some, you know, actual veterinary work that had to go on, and we'd have to, I'd have to go back and look at it, but we are trying to, you know, carefully monitor the, you know, when things go, animals go to the vet, so they don't stay there too long, and then they go to sanctuary, sanctuary in Faribault, and then we also have that holding area now in the ambulance garage, which will probably eliminate a lot of this, actually.
I think you're asking a question that nobody could answer from seven years ago.
Well, that was the other question, why are we carrying something for seven years? I would think that five years or three years would be acceptable.
I don't know.
I'd have to ask Sue about that.
Yep.
Okay, and then, I guess getting into that, I think you're asking for a lot when you're going to be keeping the animals yourself, and housing them, and taking care of them, and so on, but let's be sad, sorry.
Well, it's normal that police departments have some type of a holding area, and usually this, it's up to forty-eight hours, so we're not gonna keep stuff, animals very long. The idea is that we hold them till we, till we can get them over to the animal shelter in Faribault.
Yeah.
And that's it, so forty-eight hours is the goal most of the time, forty-eight hours are less.
Depending on how much use it gets, it could be a big saving.
I think it'll save, it will save us.
So, do we have a motion to authorize writing off those counts?
I make that motion. Second it or not, now?
On favor?
Aye.
Carriage and cutter day requests for February twenty eighth, twenty fifteen, we've got parade route permit, street closings, detour, and parking restrictions, use of the fire hall for the pre-parade meeting, a thousand dollar donation to the carriage and cutter day, and approve the, it says here, fourth annual, but I was corrected at the park and rec meeting last night, fifth annual, five K run walk route, and use of the ambulance building garage, and we can approve those all in one motion, we have a motion to approve.
I'll make that motion. Speed, yes, and I'll second it then.
All in favor?
Aye.
We are moving right along. Spring cleanup day.
We've had requests to schedule a spring cleanup day this year. I've discussed the idea with waste management, they're willing to work with the city to coordinate it, they would like it set up the same way that Ron did it, where there was a single drop-off point, and I don't think there's any reason we wouldn't do it that way again. So, what they've asked for is for the city to give them two or three dates that, you know, we'd like to do it, and then they're gonna try to fit it into their, whatever their schedule, and they've gotta call any guy, people, and so.
And this would be, we'd wanna be scheduling this on a Saturday.
Yeah, Saturday morning, yep, correct, and we did it, was it last year? I think, or was it two years ago?
I believe it was last year, yeah, I think so.
And it was in, was it in April?
Sounds right, but I am not sure.
I think it was.
Okay, so I don't know if we wanna kind of shoot for, like, the nineteenth or twenty-eighth or May third.
We'll have to give a notice to the people via the billing, the utility bill, so.
We'll have a good two months to do that, you know, it's the end of April.
Scott mentioned that the, the calendar should be changed to twenty fifteen.
Oh, good, great. Okay.
Good one, good catch. Yeah, we got one up there. I'll bring some stickies then.
All right, here's an April calendar up here, so we'd be looking at the eighteenth or the twenty-fifth, or, let's see here, May second, I mean, those are end of April or the May.
I don't see really that there'd be any preference on any of those dates, so.
Is there some context that we don't know about at this point?
Whichever of those dates would work out best for them would be acceptable, I think.
Yeah.
Don't have any holidays, or?
No, unless somebody's got something else going on, school or something, but at this point, that's not on our calendar.
Technically, every day of the year is some type of a special day for someone.
For somebody, yes.
I'll make that a motion, that staff, work with the staff that they set up the date, with waste management, and publicize it.
Second?
Okay. Question? Oh, I got a question.
Let's create a motion.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Who's seconded that?
One question that I do have is on what items, there's possibly items, there's been a question that I was approached on, was, I had heard about a cleanup day, was like TVs and that sort of thing, and I says, I really don't know, but I says, I'm sure that there would be a fee.
Yeah, there's a fee to dispose of, you know, any large items, appliances, furniture.
We're gonna be able to handle electronics in this, or not, that's hard to say, they are a specialized item.
Yeah, it'll partly depend on waste management, tires would be another thing.
That would be all put in the letter?
Yeah, so, we have to, we have to work that out with them, but yeah, there's a fee involved with people disposing of.
Later in May, there'd be the hazardous waste cleanup at the pool.
Yeah, and there was some reluctance to not do it that day, I don't think it's gonna matter either way.
Oh, not do both of them the same day?
Right, I, I don't.
I believe that's closer to the middle of May.
Okay.
I'll check with that.
Don't you get to help with that?
I have been, yeah, but I haven't gotten a notice from Willie yet, what exact date it is this year.
You gotta bring it to him.
Bring your dirtiest clothes that you're ready to throw away afterward, and it's fun, actually. Okay, so we move on to EDA items.
So, I've got several update items from the EDA. The EDA had their annual meeting on January twenty-seventh at Schweigs, I appreciate everybody coming, was able to make it, we had a very good strategic planning meeting, I guess, for lack of a better description, we had several of the council people, we had, I think, four, five department heads came, so we had, we had very good input into the, kind of, and the idea behind this setup is that it's kind of like a kickoff meeting for the activities of the EDA, and given here, and you try to kind of hold it off-site, you know, and you kind of do it as a three or four-hour kind of planning, strategic planning process, and then hold a regular meeting, so, anyway, during the meeting, we reviewed the current strategic plan, the original stakeholder survey, which was that list of all the ideas that were identified during the strategic plan development process, and kind of from there, also talked about some of the things that the EDAs identified last year that they, you know, wanted to kind of ramp up on a little bit here in the next year or two. So, anyway, there was six items that kind of came up, and most of this is basically ongoing kind of things, but the items that were identified included keeping a medical clinic in Canyon, which we'll be talking about a little bit later, finishing the fire hall, more land for commercial development, which we'll also be talking about, a little more continued beautification efforts in the downtown, the city should hold a spring cleanup day, and then additional activities for youth and community through the library. So, most of these items are ongoing, and I thought it was a very good process overall. Then during the regular meeting, and actually this popped up after the regular meeting, EDA held a special meeting on February fourth and approved, signed improvement funds for metal transformations to help us. funds for metal transformations to help with some of the cost of painting and kinda sprucing that building up, um, and they approved, uh, up to four thousand dollars, and the owners estimate that's about a ten thousand dollar project. Um, we also talked at the, going back to the regular EDA meeting, the po, of possible sites for commercial industrial park, and two areas that I think the EDA is interested in working on are, um, along County Road Twelve, the Nielsen property, which has been also looked at for a fire hall, um, possibly trying to get a couple or one or two parcels there that we could kinda start to market. Um, that area is nice because it's near, uh, three or four other, you know, light industrial type of businesses, um, so when a potential business comes and looks at it, there's already buildings there and active businesses, and so it's, from that standpoint, it's kinda a nice, it's not like we're going and starting a whole new area from scratch. And then the other area they talked about was that Semstone property, again, if that, you know, isn't as high priority for the fire hall, but if that area could be acquired and could be, um, the cement plant could be cleared off of that, um, that could be opened up and, you know, redeveloped and actually all the way back to the street to the east, that whole area could be, you know, opened up for the right project or buyers or whatever, so, so that's, those are two areas I think we're gonna be looking at this year. The Semstone area, I think, is something that from a cost standpoint, we might be able to get in, you know, get, get that acquired.
It would have the advantage...
What's that?
It would have the advantage of utilities accessible.
Yeah, oh, yeah, yeah, there's, everything's right there.
The other property would require an extension.
Yeah, yeah, exactly, so...
I guess I've got a question here for Joe now, while you were looking at these sites, did you, uh, do some soil sampling down on that, uh, cement plant site?
No, we, excuse me, no, we did not take any soil borings or soil samples. We looked at, um, soil mapping, just the, um, data that's readily available on soil types, and that'll all be part of that summary report, but we did not do any drillings of the sites.
Because, knowing prior uses of that property, not only the cement plant, but it was a petroleum fuel station down there many years ago in that immediate area, so. We've had some surprises in the past, we don't want that to happen again.
I, I did have a call from someone, uh, saying that, uh, coal was stored there, there was a big coal dump there in the trees, and there was coal oil found, uh, people had probably had discovered oil.
I believe, I believe that was the same individual that called me a couple of times.
I was wondering, all right.
And Fred.
All right, so we're well informed.
Well, we've been informed.
Yes, okay. We can certainly see how the results of the preliminary analysis, if it shows that council is leaning towards that site and we wanna do a next level of investigation, we certainly could take steps at that time to, yeah, to do that.
I wondered if that might have been part of your...
Now, at this point, in order to keep the costs economical, uh, we went with just soil survey information that was readily available, uh, we didn't do any specific testing on the sites.
Yeah, I don't think it would be feasible to do full soil reports, you know, on three sites, I mean, it would be costly.
Right. But if they are going to develop that, looking to develop...
Yeah, that's probably what we're gonna do, definitely.
Right, to be done.
I would think whatever, whatever the city identifies as its preferred site, we'd, we'd want to do soil, more detailed, specific soil testing on that site, so...
Likely do a phase one as well and see if a phase two's needed to see what's there, but that's based on history, which would also dictate what soils you do.
Okay, and then the last item here, we have, uh, letter of concern to reduction of hours at the Mayo Canyon Clinic, and, uh, I have a letter here.
This is a draft, I mean, we can add or change anything, but we wanted to try to capture, uh, as much as I could in, without making it too big.
I, I see no problems with that letter as it is.
Mm-hmm.
You kind of...
Sit down and talk, that's basically what it's asking.
Right.
Yeah.
Anyone else have any, uh, concerns? Ready to, ready to sign it and send it off? It is definitely an issue.
Mm-hmm.
And I like the fact that it brings up how it could affect possible viability of the Sunset Home, which is really important to a lot of people.
Yeah, yeah.
There's people living there.
And families of people living there. And possibly us in...
In the future.
In a shorter time than we want to imagine.
Yeah.
It's surprising how, just, uh, conversation that people have asked, as a matter of fact today, what's the, you know, what's happening? They've asked, what's happening, is it gonna close, is it gonna do this here and this? And I think this would be a good way to get it started, to make a movement on it.
There's other letters that have, I haven't seen them, but Cavo was gonna send a letter out, the nursing home was gonna send a letter out, and there might have been some other ones, I haven't seen them, but, so hopefully, you know, we'll see what comes of it.
There's, there's been talk in the past about, uh, Mayo pulling out, and I don't know if they even have for a little bit or something, but then come back in, so, uh, this has been going on for a while.
I think it's more of a change in the way they organized or... Okay, the letter is, just needs to be typed up and signed and sent off. Um, other business, schedule of upcoming meetings, uh, next city council meeting Tuesday, March tenth, at seven PM as usual, and the twenty fifteen Board of Appeal and Equalization, Thursday, April twenty-third, at five-thirty, and that will be here in the chamber.
So who are the, you are...
Not me, Russ and Rick.
Okay, so you're the two designated.
Who?
Rick and Russ.
Okay.
They're the two that have gone through the train.
Yeah, yeah.
I thought you said Ray, I was wondering who Ray was. Hard to hear. Well, maybe I'm hard at speaking. Council staff general comments? I'm gonna pass.
Well, I, I guess my comment is, I, I always enjoy coming, and, uh, it's nice to have a, a good discussion, whether lively or not, with, uh, all the members and perhaps the audience, um, so another good year is here, and, um, I look forward to walking in.
Uh, that's good here. And much as I would like to see a full house of citizens here, I can give them a pass tonight.
Yeah, yeah.
We didn't take a pass.
Well...
When you go here, yeah. Well, it's because we enjoy coming so much.
Is that true?
That is, yeah.
Ready?
Nope, no comment. After all of that.
No, no comment. Well, I think it was mentioned earlier, but I just wanna bring up again, the audit next starts Wednesday, or Tuesday, I think, there.
Tuesday, Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, Wednesday is the day Tom will be...
Yeah, so that'll...
And that's when we, that's when Rick and I should be here to meet with him.
Yeah.
What, what time are we talking about?
It's all right down here.
Or will I get some sort of a notice in the mail?
We're gonna call...
Don't think, the time has been set.
Yeah, it's kind of...
Keep your phone charged and turned on.
Okay, that I can do.
Wednesday, the next Wednesday is when you should kinda figure that that might be when he comes.
I, I confirmed it with him at the meeting in Rochester.
Oh, that's right, he was there, couldn't miss him, could you? Kinda towers over everybody else.
Yeah, he is, of course, man. So, no more comments, do we, uh, have a motion to adjourn this meeting? Move on to our...
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Meeting adjourned. Then, we have two closed sections to move on to.